I'd like to call the meeting to order. Ms. Santisiri, would you please take the planning board role?
Ms. Hamilton?
Here.
Mr. Malpatano?
Here.
Mr. Cantala?
I think he's on.
He's here. Frankie?
He's on. He's on. Frank?
Yeah, he's here.
Frankie, stay here.
Mr. Kirk?
Excused.
Excuse. Ms. Kozinski?
Yeah.
Mr. Del Tufo?
Yeah.
Mr. Arcuti?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Tangora?
Here.
Mr. Kuzira?
Here.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Here.
Mayor Tucci?
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Cantala, would you please sit for Mr. Kirk? Please take notice, a quorum of the governing body may be present at the regularly scheduled Planning Board meeting of Wednesday, March 10, 2021, at 7:00 p.m. And please take notice, a quorum of the zoning board of adjustment may be present at the regularly scheduled Planning Board meeting of Wednesday, March 10, 2021, at 7:00 p.m. And please take notice, a quorum of the Board of Education may be present at the regularly scheduled Planning Board meeting of Wednesday, March 10, 2021, at 7:00 p.m. And please take notice that in addition to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Planning Board, a joint meeting of the Planning Board, Zoning Board of Adjustment, the Board of Education, and the governing body will take place immediately following the regularly scheduled meeting of the Planning Board to review and discuss land use and other issues affecting the township of Nutley as related to the Zoning Board of Adjustment and Planning Board. And please take notice that formal action may be taken. And take further notice, the meeting will be held via Zoom for the following notice. And then it has, you know, all of the information about how to connect. If you've all had a chance to read the minutes of our last meeting, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any extensions or oppositions? Thank you. Mr. Kuzira, do we have any communications or bills?
I do have one. It's a bill for Ms. Santisiri for her attendance at preparation of the minute meetings for the meeting of February 24, 2021, which were just approved by the Board. It's the amount of $150, which I find to be fair and reasonable.
Is there a motion to approve?
Move to pay.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppositions or anyone opposed? Thank you. Is there any old business to come before the Board tonight? Under new business, we have to confirm several hearings. The first one is the Yanaco Secure Vestibule Edition application, which is scheduled for March 24, 2021. Additionally scheduled for that evening is the Diamond Spring Redevelopment Investigation Study by Francis Reiner from DMR Architects, and that's also scheduled for March 24. And we need to confirm the hearing already scheduled for 45 Hillside, which is a major subdivision application, and that is scheduled for April 14, 2021. And we need to confirm the hearing for the Historic Preservation Committee seeking designation of the following properties as a historic landmark, which is scheduled for April 28. And the properties are Kingsland Manor, 3 Kingsland Street, Nutley Museum, 65 Church Street, Breland House, 226 Chestset Street, Van Riper House, 491 River Road. So if that is, if everyone is in agreement with those meetings, you know, we're all informed as to when they will be. I think we can move on now, if it's all right, to the joint meeting with the other three boards. Can we, I guess we can start by all introducing ourselves and just identifying the board on which we serve. And I'll start. I'm Carol Tangora, and I'm chairperson of the Planning Board.
Arcuti, vice chairperson of the Planning Board.
Madam Chair, having done a couple of these meetings, it may be better just for you to ask each person to introduce themselves and
Sure.
order in your, on your screen.
Great idea.
A little bit better.
Great idea. Alani, why don't you start?
Alani?
Is it any pettus? I'm the municipal clerk for the Township of Nutley, and I serve for the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you. Frank?
Evening.
Frank Resiano. Oh, well, Frank, remind me. Frank Resiano, zoning board chairman.
Thank you. Barry?
Barry Kuzira. I'm the attorney for the Planning Board.
Lorraine?
Lorraine Kozinski, Planning Board.
Frank?
Demeo?
Ella, Planning Board.
Commissioner Evans?
Tom Evans, Commissioner Revan with Finance.
Thank you. Diana?
Diana McGovern, Attorney for the Zoning Board.
Thank you. Kenneth Riley?
Ken Riley, Board of Education.
Commissioner Scott Kelly?
Joe Scarpelli, Commissioner of Public Works and a member of the Planning Board.
Erica?
Erica Zarrow, Board of Education.
Dr. Glazer?
Hi, I'm Julie Glazer, Superintendent of Schools.
Walt?
Walt Smith, Nutley Planning Board.
Frank?
Frank, I'll take Cantala's spot this time.
Linda?
Board of Ed, trustee.
Linda? Linda Hamilton?
Linda Hamilton, Planning Board, Mayor's designee.
Thank you. Dave?
Dave Berry, construction official.
Yvette?
Yvette Wallace, Zoning Board.
Thank you. Mark?
Mark Arcuti, Vice Chair of Planning Board.
Anthony?
Anthony Malpatano, Planning Board member.
Mayor Tucci?
Mayor Tucci, Mayor, Planning Board.
Charles Kozinski?
Charlie Kozinski, President of Nutley Board of Education, husband of Lorraine Kozinski.
There you go.
Gail?
Ms. Santisiri, Planning Board, Recording Secretary.
Jerry?
Jerry Del Tufo, Planning Board.
Daniel?
Daniel Tolby, Zoning Board.
David?
David Depes, School Board of Education.
Thank you. Lisa?
Lisa Dancheck-Martin, Nutley Board of Education, Vice President.
Lorraine?
Lori Castro, Zoning Board.
Pat? Patricia? You're muted. Pat?
Patricia Doherty, Zoning Board.
Thank you. Teresa?
Teresa Duva, Zoning Board.
Dave? Dave Scheidel?
You Scheidel, Zoning Board.
Scheidel, thank you. Commissioner Kelly?
Commissioner Kelly, Department of Public Affairs and Health.
Thank you. Greg?
Greg Tolby, Zoning Board.
Thank you. I think that's everybody. Did I miss anyone?
Carol, Commissioner Petrakow was in as an attendee, but he dropped off. He might be trying to get in as a panelist.
Okay, let me promote him to panelist. I don't see him here.
He dropped off. He might be trying to re-enter.
Okay. Thank you. I think we can get started, certainly while we're waiting for him. Frank, do you want to proceed with your report?
I can, yes. Well, good evening, everyone. I wish we were able to have this meeting in person, but thanks to everyone who's put this together for us and also sets up ours and assists us with our meetings as well. We rely on them quite a bit. In the year 2020, there were 41 cases heard by the zoning board. This is nine less than in 2019. Of the 41 cases, 40 were approved, and of those 40, 18 had conditions imposed as part of the approval. There were no cases dismissed or withdrawn. The majority of the cases were for fences, pools, and driveways, as usual. We also heard this year, seven leave-as-erected cases. That's it for the report on that, but I, as I stated in last year's meeting, some of the things we would like the Planning Board to take a look at are possibility of adding spaces for loading and deliveries, as well as guest spaces in the multifamily and mixed use applications. And another concern we mentioned is with the increase in electric vehicles, as we need to look at the requirements for charging stations as we use, get, see more and more electric vehicles coming into play. We also mentioned the confusion in the code with regard to fast food and takeaway restaurants. And we hope the Planning Board would review that as well. I don't know if Dave Berry is going to bring this up tonight, but I remember him asking last year about the Airbnb occupancy regulations. Maybe we're going to take another look at That's about all I've got. I'll be happy to take any questions, as long as they're easy, and if they're hard, I'll refer them to Diana.
Are there any questions for Frank?
Frank, I have one. I saw one was a denial. I just went to look at the, whatever you, someone shared, and then it went away, so. Right away.
It was the denial on Franklin Avenue of the drive-through for
Yeah.
the Starbucks.
Starbucks application. Well, it was the bank application.
It should have also said, I didn't catch this when we were looking at this in draft, it should also have said use variance on that.
What did they want to do?
They wanted to add a couple of, or one or two drive-through lanes. Plus, we had the drive-throughs with the bank, and I guess the Board thought that the close proximity to the school, early rush morning, rush hour traffic in the morning, the concern was for traffic pulling in and out of there, and it was denied.
It's a difficult parking lot, anyway. You know, it's very tight.
Yeah, we were concerned with queuing, and we were concerned with, more concerned was the exiting of the cars in the morning. We've got the, you've got the post office there, you've got the school there. It's pretty close to the corner. That was probably the main concern.
Okay. Are there any other questions for Frank?
I have a question, Madam Chairman.
Yes.
Frank, I see a lot, a lot of the cases that come before you concern fencing. Is there something that we're missing, or are they just looking to deviate from what the regulations are?
Most of the time, it's for solid fencing, and that's not allowed. A lot of times, it's six-foot, and a lot of it is for solid. And in some cases, solid is okay, and in some cases, a lot to do with security reasons, sometimes with blind spots for, on corner properties, things like that, with cars, it becomes a problem. But security reasons, you know, if you have a solid fence and something's happening in your yard that shouldn't be happening, well, then if a police officer's passing by, he can't see what's happening. Most of it is, is pretty much, though, the six-foot and the solid, more often than not, it's the solid fence.
Okay, thanks, Frank.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for Frank?
I have a question, Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
Seems like you guys asked for years for us to address the density on the mixed use, and doesn't seem like you had anything come up for approval or denial, so I'm assuming that ordinance is working.
Yes, that has been a huge help. It really has. It seems to be doing what it was designed to do, yes.
Good. Yes, Anthony?
Frank, your recommendations about us looking into the EVO requirements, the electric car requirements, are you finding a demand for it more and more, or?
No, just trying to think ahead.
Yeah, yeah. I find them on every one of the properties that I'm involved in, and it is increasing, and it's even getting more specific in different towns where they want different types of charges, quicker charges than long-time charges. So I'm seeing it in other towns. You're right, maybe getting ahead of this might be smart for us.
Yeah, I think that's probably the best thing. The other thing we thought about was the deliveries. Now, with everybody ordering from Amazon, you're going to have, you know, we've got these vans pulling in and out a lot, so if we have a spot designated for deliveries and loading, that would help a lot.
You know, maybe when, you know, our schedule opens up a bit, we can schedule a workshop meeting, you know, and discuss some of these things. Are there any? Yes, Jerry?
Last meeting, we spoke a little bit about Airbnbs and short-term rentals. Has that proliferated? Any problems associated with those proliferating, or that kind of dry out in last year?
We didn't have any problem with that, but I know that, I just mentioned that because I know David brought it up last year, and before it does become a problem, I thought we were trying to head it off of the pass again. Is that right, Dave?
Yes. This year, obviously with COVID, that's been, you know, very quiet. Last year, we had several problems, and it was difficult dealing with it. So I do think that it's something that we should discuss with the Planning Board. I actually have that in one of my notes, Frank. You were right.
Diana, did you want to say something?
The thing, the parking spaces with the electric cars or the loading zone, you have to understand, we had, this was an odd year, because a lot of the larger applications, I think maybe were held back a bit. But Nutley, the way I understand, most of those applications are planned, is they look at the number of parking spaces they have to have, and then they build accordingly. So if you're going to, if we, as, if the zoning board is going to then start imposing conditions, saying you have to have a loading space, and you have to have one or two or three car spaces for electric, that's going to really throw off an individual's planning. So I think that that's an important thing to look going forward.
Yeah, it's a good point. I think that, you know, maybe, Dave, once we schedule this, you know, this workshop meeting, if you could be present, it would probably be, you know, very helpful for us as well. And of course, anyone from the zoning board who wishes, you know, to participate, you know, certainly be welcome.
Absolutely.
I have a question about, Chair, for Anthony Malpatano. Anthony, any towns that you know of, like requiring an electric charging station per space?
No, I don't think it's in their ordinance. Joe, we do it based on our own density, our own population, you know, how many parking stalls, how we average, you know, for every 100 spaces or 100 units, it's about two to three stalls. We try to space them around as much as possible, and some of the properties, we're going back and installing them again, Joe, and we're getting higher numbers, because there's more requirements for it. And as I was saying earlier, towns are not only asking to make sure that we have them in our plan, but asking for different types of charges, too.
Bye, Maggie.
Yes, Mark?
First of all, regarding the electric cars and the electric chargers, yes, the automobile industry is moving rapidly to that, in that direction, but the companies that are involved in this, they're also going to be using the infrastructures of our gas stations. You'll be able to pull into a gas station and charge your car rather than fill it with gas. There's technology out there now that you can basically do a full charge in a very short period of time. It's not as fast as you can get a tank of gas, but it's not, it's not, it's not a 45-minute or a five-hour charge like it used to be years ago. And the technology from those companies is progressing almost every day, because the demand is going to be there, and the infrastructure has to be there to take the demand. So yes, there's going to be residential needs for it, but eventually, virtually every gas station is going to have a handful of chargers, charging stations as well, because you'll be able to pull in with your electric car and fill up in 10 minutes. Regarding the Airbnbs, Dave, do you happen to know if there is another town that has already addressed it in their ordinances? Short-term rentals, Airbnbs, something that we can maybe get, as the Planning Board, take a look at and see if we want to model something similar to it?
Yeah, Jersey City did a phenomenal job. They have something. I could get some research for us for that.
If we're going to, if we're going to discuss it in a workshop, I think we should have that document to study and be able to work off.
Any further questions for Frank? If there are none, we can move on to the Board of Ed. Dr. Glazer? Is there anything you wish to discuss?
We were asked several questions, and I'm prepared with some, but I think Mr. Kozinski was actually going to start with
Okay.
planning and zoning pieces.
Okay.
Thank you very much. And first of all, I want to thank everyone here tonight. This is the nucleus of the concerned citizens of Nutley, and I really appreciate everyone being here. I want to thank you all for listening to us tonight. I know we've been through this every year, and I want to thank my Board of Education. It's been a very difficult year for the educational system in Nutley, as you know. Today, or actually this week, was the second week of our children going back into a hybrid situation in our schools. So right now, we have the hybrid situation and the virtual. So if our children have chosen to go back to a hybrid, they are doing their regular classrooms, half-day. We haven't gone back to full day yet. We're still going with a, what's called a virtual Wednesday, which is classes on Monday and Tuesday for one group, classes on Thursday and Friday for another group, and Wednesday is a cleanup day. We're probably looking to move away from that very shortly, hopefully, and go to a five-day week, probably later on this month. All of our classes will be back, the special need classes, the ABA classes, still not our kindergarten yet, but we're working towards that. It's been a very, very challenging year for all Boards of Education, but certainly for your town Board of Education. We've struggled with a lot. We, our teachers and our staff have become slowly vaccinated. Dr. Glazer's been able to make a connection with the Meadowlands, where we have, I believe, 100 teachers, schedule 100 staff members, scheduled this week or next week, and hopefully more, to receive their shots. That's going to be an important part of getting our school system back to some type of normalcy. We have quite a bit on the agenda, and it's, it's been a real hectic year for us, but right now, coming before you, and I appreciate the Planning Board putting that on your agenda from March 24, will be the secure entrance at Yanaco School. That will complete our secure entrances at our school. When you do see the drawings, I'm sure you'll be pleased and happy on the, on us maintaining that Yanaco appearance that we want to maintain, and at the same time, giving us the secure entrance we're looking for. We're going to take the principal's office and the offices that were on the second floor, move them down to the first floor, to the side of the building, so that coming in and out of that building will be controlled by the staff at Yanaco School, similar to Spring Garden, or Lincoln, or Radcliffe, which we've already, and Washington, which we've already completed. Our numbers, as Dr. Glazer will touch on, are still extremely high, and we expect them to go even higher. If you, and this focus of people that we have on the board here tonight, if you find time in your busy schedule to see and want to see more of what's happening, just go to Washington School. Some of the members that are here tonight, Dr. Glazer's saying no, but to get an idea of what is going on as far as the personnel and the numbers of children at Washington School. Washington School, the numbers are at, you know, a school that was built for 300 children is over 600 children in Washington School. Staggering, staggering. And the numbers are going up everywhere throughout Nutley, mainly from what we see on the sale of one-family homes, but I'm sure we're going to talk about that some more. So the numbers are staggering still for Nutley, and it's a challenge for us. The, we completed the Oval to the point that we still have more to do in the Oval. We don't have the money to do anything more than finish the field as we have, fix the scoreboard, a new scoreboard, do a lot of peripheral work that we did in the Oval. The light stanchions are there, but with no lights, because we don't have the money to complete that project. But I think if you've taken a good look at the Oval, and I want to thank the, all the Commissioners for the help that we've received from the Parks Department, from the Road Department, Commissioner Scott Kelly, Commissioner Mayor Tucci, Mr. Evans has been working with us. Mayor Tucci's been helpful with his group in getting us through some projects at the Oval, which you've seen, there's going to be some tree planting going on there eventually to even dress the Oval up more. That's where we are, basically, right now, but it's only 7:25 on Wednesday night, and with our job, Dr. Glazer and myself, it changes by the hour. So from there, we'll go into Dr. Glazer's discussion. Her and I will go back and forth tonight, as much as you like, if that works for you.
Thank you. Dr. Glazer?
Thanks, thanks, Charlie. And the reason I was shaking my head is that we don't want visitors to come to the school right now, please. We have done an amazing job. Every single person on our staff, all 600-plus staff members have participated in making sure that we were able to return for in-person instruction. We've been open all along. I can't believe that Friday, it'll be a year that we announced that we would close for two weeks, and here we are. But I will tell you that yesterday and today, we had meetings with our staff, with our pandemic response teams, working to have discussions on how we can continue to increase instructional time, how we can continue to build up the days. There'll be a formal announcement coming from that yet this week of adding days, as Mr. Kozinski said, for our special education students and the ABA program. We will be going to five days a week for those in the next coming weeks, so continue to listen. We have put in protocols that have kept Nutley safe, kept our staff and students safe. We have been doing required COVID testing of our staff before their return to the building. We require all of our student athletes and any of those participating in in-person clubs to be tested. We're doing surveillance testing, and as Mr. Kozinski said, we've been very fortunate to be able to vaccinate any of our staff members that have requested to be vaccinated. I do want to say, I take little credit for that. I'm going to look to the Commissioners. You'll be surprised when I tell you that it's because of the work that each of you has done over a period of years. We are partners with the Hackensack Meridian Medical Center. We're part of a partnership with the medical school. Perhaps you've been on some of our question-and-answer panels that I've done, that the physicians that we work with have done, and that the eight medical students that are assigned to us have participated in. And it's because of that partnership that we were able to have our staff vaccinated very quickly. I also do want to say, when I'm thanking Commissioners, Commissioner Kelly and his staff have been, when I type, support doesn't begin to talk about the 24/7 availability I have to his staff. And in particular, I want to shout out Patty Cruz, our local health nurse. You have no idea how many times we speak daily, and I couldn't be more grateful. So Commissioners, thank you, because you do share a tremendous responsibility for what we've been able to do. For tonight, what I was asked to speak to was, again, growing populations, answer some questions and misconceptions. So first of all, I did go to our registrar. The number of people that have stated specifically that they are taking their children out of the district while we've been closed this year for homeschooling or for private schools, at the elementary level is 26, and at the middle and high school level combined, 18. So all of the questions that I got, asking me if it was 150, 200, 600, those are the real numbers. So there is that, and we do expect, especially from the homeschool population, those children to return in the coming year. We continue to have a space problem. As we're bringing the children back, the CDC guidelines are asking us to not only mask, but to keep six feet of social distancing. As you've heard year over year, as you just heard, Mr. Kozinski- As you've heard year over year, as you just heard Mr. Kozinski say, we, we continue to have an instructional space issue. We are using, continuing to use every available instructional space as we bring people back. And obviously, that, that is part of our ongoing conversation. I was asked in particular tonight to speak to our preschool program and our special education capacity. I think many of you know, and of course, our board members who have been on the board for a long time know, that in 2007, the district received a grant. Beautiful article in the New York Times, happy to share it with anybody who is not familiar with that, announcing that the district was going to start an ABA program. That's a program for autistic populations. We did start with two classes in 2007. Since that time, that ABA program has moved all the way up into our high school. We have six classes at Radcliffe School, one at the middle school, and our RISE program at the high school. Couldn't be prouder that we are educating students all the way until they're 21 years of age. This program and all of our special education programs allows us to bring our population back into the public schools and back into the Nutley community. Nutley has the lowest number of out-of-district placement students in our area. And again, I couldn't be prouder of that. Our team, Mrs. Helen Doyle Moreno, our supervisor, April Vitiello, they've been consistent for our program over the last seven years, and it's really a credit to them, what we've been able to do. As far as our preschool program goes, I'm not sure that people do know that it is not a daycare program. This is a program that comes out of our special education program. When it was started in 2012, there was one preschool class. It is an integrated preschool class, which means we're required by mandate by the Department of Education to educate those preschool students, assess and educate those preschool students in our local community who require those services. And because those students deserve able counterparts, to be in classrooms with able role models, we, it is an integrated program. So the additional spots in those classes are filled by lottery, our general education students in town. We do have two integrated classes. In addition, we have four ABA classes, preschool classes. Those are, again, those autistic classes and two preschool disabled classes. So we've grown in the last eight years from one class to eight classes. And the significance of that is huge. We have not added any additional classrooms. We don't put our preschool students in the trailers. That's where we have to move our sixth-grade classes to make room for all these additional preschool classes. The other piece to that is the ABA class, we're allowed to have 12 students in preschool. We can only have six students in kindergarten. So we take those four classes, right, with 12 students, and in kindergarten, we can only have six students. So there's a huge growth. And, and every year, we continue to run out of space. When you, I hope you will all participate in our preliminary budget conversation, March 22nd, you, you'll hear that there is a need for yet an additional kindergarten ABA classroom. There's no space. I, I literally, I could put it on the roof at this point, under a tent, and I'm not sure that I'd have enough space. Those issues continue. And I was actually grateful that that was the focus that you asked me to talk about tonight. We don't really talk about those programs as often. Our special education budget is almost a quarter of our budget, of the total budget. We have about 14%, maybe 16% of our total student population that's special education. So there is a disparity, but those mandates are critical. And again, I think all of us are very proud that we're able to offer those services within the district. It's a struggle with our 2% budget. It's a struggle every year. Again, you hear us have those same conversations. But we're very, very proud of the program and very proud of the growth. I want to take this opportunity to introduce to you David DePisa. He is the business administrator that joined us in July. He replaces Karen Gaimans, who is with us for a number of years. David comes with a tremendous amount of experience, and under his guidance, I'm really proud that we're continuing our zero-based budgeting, and I'm really proud that we've continued to find creative and innovative ways to fund these programs and to look at space in a different way. You'll hear from David specifically at the March and May budget meetings, and I truly encourage you to get to know him and ask some of those questions. He's, I think, will be a true partner to many of you. The other thing we were asked to, to speak to tonight was the variances. Every year, we've talked about the number of variances, what that means in the district. So I, I will tell you that already, we have over 100 variances for the fall. That means requests for students not to attend their homeschool. Most of those requests are because I went to Yanacaw School. I would like my children to go to Yanacaw School. My childcare is at Spring Garden. I live at Washington. My children live by Radcliffe, but I prefer Washington School. So a lot of them are based in those realities. We have a number of students that started their variance as a sibling of a special education child. Many cases, that special education child has moved from the elementary school, and we are able to return a child to their homeschool. We continue to have the same issue year over year with families moving into, I'll use Radcliffe as an example, but it happens at every school. I bought a house. I moved across the street from the school. Our closing happened in April, May, June, July. Now I'm coming to register for kindergarten. The waiting list for kindergarten is already 10, 11 students. I'm not able to accommodate you. I have to put you in a kindergarten class at a different school where, where I have space. And this will be the fifth year where that is the case. And it's very, very challenging because, you know, again, I have it at every school. I use Radcliffe as an example. I have it at Yanacaw. I have it at Spring Garden. And it's very challenging to tell a family that's just invested in the community, that's just invested in a new home, that is just starting in our school system in preschool or kindergarten, that they can't go to their homeschool. That, that situation has not changed, and I will tell you, just from the number of variances already here on March 10th, that I don't expect that to change for the fall either. That's what we were asked to address, but if you have other questions, I know Mr. Kozinski and myself are happy to answer.
Questions, I just have one more mention, one more thing I wanted to mention. I know the planning board is, is very active in keeping an eye on multiple dwellings that are coming up, and, and I'm going to refer to them as apartments or condos, whatever. And I know you're going to be discussing more of them in the near future. And, and I certainly appreciate the little notes that, or the, the letters that we get from you, letting us know this is coming before you. And, and I certainly don't want to see Nutley not progress. But if you haven't, if you don't know it already, the schools are bursting at the, at the seams. There, there's just no more room to do some type of a major function and expect me or Dr. Glazer to handle 10 or 15, I'm exaggerating, but more children at any one of our schools. Certain levels are just shut out. Certain levels at different schools, fifth grade at Lincoln, fourth grade at Yanacaw, whatever it might be, they're literally shut out. If someone has a, buys a house in the Lincoln School District, then I don't know exactly what, what level is shut out, but their student is going into fifth grade at Lincoln, that might not happen. We're going to tell that parent that I don't have room. You're going to have to go to maybe, maybe Yanacaw, if I can fit you in there, or maybe Spring Garden, if I can fit you in there. So the Nutley that you and I are used to, walking to our homeschool district, is, is changing unfortunately, simply because the, the schools are exploding. And they're not exploding so much because of, they're, they're actually shrinking as far as education's concerned, because we're putting more, more children in classes that can't accommodate. There's, as the teachers would say, there's not the room that we're looking for in the classrooms that we had years ago. So internally, they're shrinking because of the amount of children that we can or cannot put in the classrooms.
And to be clear, that's not enrollment. Our enrollment is stable. I've reported that year over year. It is the, the shrinking buildings. And I will also echo what Mr. Kozinski said. We are grateful to receive the plans before they're coming, to have the opportunity to comment on what impacts there might be in the schools. You know, we, we understand that, that ratables make a difference to the tax. We understand growth and progress, but, but we do need to also convey to you when there is an impact on any one of our seven buildings.
What's the current enrollment?
We're a little over 4,100.
Julie, Tom Evans, in your recap, thank you, was very comprehensive, very depressing, but very comprehensive. But, you know, one of the things that's on the horizon, which we have, have no choice but to comply, is the affordable housing settlement, which requires 55 units, most of which will be two- and three-bedroom units, as required by law.
Yes.
So, and so there is going to be a certain number of required new growth that will have to be accommodated. And I think that, you know, in terms of years, I think your horizon is, is sooner rather than later.
Yes.
And that's, that's, that's going to be in the next three to five years, for sure.
Yeah, you, you were very gracious to talk to me about that. It was happening in my hometown of Cranford already. So I understood a little bit of the implications of what that meant. And part of our decision to invest in the trailer for Spring Garden was knowing that that affordable housing was on the horizon. It's unfortunate. I am hopeful. I've said this, I don't know how many times in my five, almost six years in the district, that we'll be able to, as a community, come together and really begin to address these overcrowding issues once and for all.
It's such a vital issue. Any plans, you know, in the works to present another referendum?
I'll start that discussion. Yes, there probably will be a discussion coming up. We're trying to get, most importantly, we're trying to get our children back in school. Now, now that we're moving towards having our children back to a five-day week, yes, we are going to start that, have to start that discussion with the board, simply because you, you know, the town has purchased the, the bike shop property, which we're all familiar with. We are expanding, with your help, we are expanding the parking lot behind the middle school to give us some parking space for our teachers. But the classroom, to move the sixth grade academically into a real middle school and have six, seventh, and eighth is a need. I think the community knows has to happen. That, that's not going to get rid of our trailers, but it's going to open up some of the classroom space in the grammar schools. We need to start that discussion again, yes. Financially, it's not a good time, but financially, it is a good time. It's not a good time financially because people have lost their jobs. They're not working. It's, it's a difficult time that way. But as Commissioner Evans said, the, the rate is right for now to do that. So we are going to start that discussion.
And I was going to say, you know, Chair Tangora, I don't know that we've ever stopped having that conversation internally. You know, it's a shell game for us. We, we move classes. We move students. We move programs. We're at a place where we're going to begin offering programs after school and in the evenings that should be offered during the school day. So, so it's never far from, from our conversation internally. But obviously, you have to be sensitive to the community, to the community's needs. And, and we, we continue to, to work with all of you to make that happen.
Well, it's apparent to me, the, the effort that you've all put forth, you know, with this, I, I think you've been very creative with a lot of the things that you have done. And I can only hope that the community will come together and recognize that there is a real need for something to be done.
Just, Carol, I agree with you and your thought. Julie and Charlie, is there, it's a very early days, the, or moments, because the COVID relief bill was passed today. It will be signed by the President. Embedded in there, is there, have you seen anything which would suggest that New Jersey would be the benefactor of monies that could actually help for capital improvements in schools?
So, yes, we, we are very fortunate in New Jersey, and I believe we will be in Nutley. And the Nutley Public Schools will be fortunate, although I think my grandchildren will be paying for it. But I think we'll be fortunate to benefit from extra federal money that'll be earmarked for facilities. It won't be enough, you know, just based on our enrollment, to do a referendum or to be able to do the programs at the level that we're talking about here. But I am confident, just from, from the little bit that I know, in the hopes that, that President Biden was going to sign it, I'm confident that it will help us offset some of the costs that we've talked about over time for HVAC ventilation, perhaps the secure entrance at the middle school, some of those things. I do think it'll be a significant amount of money for facilities. Not enough for a referendum, but significant to offset some other costs.
I have a question, Madam Chair.
Yes, yes, Commissioner.
Julie, with, with the experience with remote learning, is there any opportunities, especially at the high school level, to have, to save space by having remote classes for, where instead of having maybe two classes at 25, we can do it remotely with having, you know, 50 or 75 kids and one teacher? Is that a possibility moving forward?
I would say that it's a possibility. We're still waiting to hear from the Department of Education the difference between what they're mandating now, right, which is 100% virtual option for everybody, and what we might be able to do with instruction moving forward. They have not even allowed us to know if next year we'd be able to do a virtual snow day. So we haven't had a lot of cooperation on that end. I will say that nationally, there is a lot of movement from what we have learned in virtual learning and remote instruction, to be able to do dual instruction classes, AP classes, other kinds of advanced classes at the high school. I would say that what we've learned most of all is that in-person instruction remains the most effective and the best. Our students that are virtual are getting instruction. We are proud of our, again, what our staff is doing is amazing. But to have 50 people on a call, and I actually taught a class last night with 44 people, is not the same experience. It's not the same educational. I think that there will be a place for us to do some, some hybrid instruction, some dual instruction going forward. But I think we have to, to really think carefully educationally before we make a decision to, to have one teacher and 50 students in a, in a Google Meet or Zoom or whatever.
Madam Chair, I have a question, please. This is for Dr. Glazer and President Kozinski. I know there's $130 billion that's included in that bill that was sent to the President for K to 12 schools, okay? In the interim, all right, to follow up on what Commissioners Scarpelli mentioned, is there any thought being given to, to continue virtual learning for some of the students? And I know it's absolutely not as effective as in-person learning, but it's, it's something that may be able to help us in this awkward period that we're in. And, and I'm sure you're also aware that congressional earmarks are back. So I would also suggest that you get with your grant people, and however we can help, you know, we always stand ready to jump in and do whatever we can. Maybe we can couple some of that earmark money with some of this other money that'll be coming from the President to move forward on our space issue. We're all very aware, all right, that while our appropriations, all right, are very We're all very aware, all right, that while our appropriations, all right, are very conservative, our revenues, all right, unfortunately are equally conservative. So we, we have a lot of challenges before us, but I think we need to be extra creative and think out of the box to do whatever it is we can do to give our students the best education that they can possibly get, because we all know that property values are directly tied to school systems, as well as the other amenities like services and parks and all the other good stuff that we have. But we need to improve, we need to make more space, all right? And I don't think anything should be off the table or out of bounds as far as discussions are concerned on how we address this. And I think, and I'm very happy that the cooperation between all of our boards, all right, is at, at such a level that I think we're communicating better now than we ever have, all right? And that together we can control some of this spending and do some of this planning that we need to do so that we can get to a point where we can satisfy the majority of our needs. We're always going to have needs, we'll never satisfy all of them, but we need to be positioned in a much better place so that we can afford the best education, the best services possible for the people that live here.
Absolutely. And again, I can't thank you enough for all of the support, not just grant support, but even just the conversations we have with the commissioners always gives us a different perspective and a different lens. And I'm grateful for that. So we have already heard about some of that money. We've already received some of those allocations. And in some places where we thought we'd be able to use the money, it does come with strings and it does come with not just earmarks, but telling us specifically how we can use it. So we have received additional CARES, CARES Act money. We've received additional what's called ESSER money. Think of it as your Title One, Two, Three, Four. We are going to be using that, as I said, to extend the school day. We'll be able to extend that school day for additional, we call it double dose of instruction for students, especially our lower, our younger students and our special education students. We have already been able to use that money to extend our, our one-to-one initiative devices from fifth grade all the way to twelve for every student in the district. So a number of things like that, Mayor, where, where we already have been able to identify places for enhancing the curriculum instruction and assessment. I understand that the money from today is going to be specific to facilities. They, they mentioned HVAC in particular. The goal is to get the schools reopened, fully reopened, not, not in a hybrid model. Although I will tell you that the Department of Education has mandated the virtual option. And currently in Nutley, district-wide, about a third of our students have remained virtual. At the middle school, a little less, at the high school, a little more, almost forty-eight percent at the high school. So we, we are continuing to, to work in that hybrid, you know, partially remote, partially in-person arena, and I absolutely think we'll continue to, to look at every opportunity. So again, thank you.
Yeah, just one other question, if I might, Madam Chair. With that virtual option, for the third of those students that are exercising their right to do that, all right, is it for a specific period of time, once you select that virtual option, or can you opt back in at any time?
So we have allowed, we've opened up the portal each marking period for those students that were virtual, that wanted to come back into the building. And our re-entry plan allows in between that time for you to contact your building principal to see if there is an opportunity or an available seat to move into hybrid. To go to virtual, we've allowed that at any time, obviously. That, that's a much easier transition. The, the state has mandated the hundred percent virtual option through June thirtieth, through the end of this school year. It looks different again at each level. As we continue to bring students back into the building, obviously the available seats get, get filled. We are looking to the governor and to the Department of Health to continue to address the capacity. The governor talked a little bit about that today, but didn't change the social distancing. The CDC is changing their guidelines daily, as Mr. Kaczynski alluded to. So we're hopeful that we'll get the guidance that we need, right, to be able to be more flexible, having more students come in. I think that we're actually seeing students at this time, especially at the high school level, going more virtual than in person. And part of our conversations are how are we enticing those older children to actually come back into the buildings? To, to get out of their pajamas and get out of their bed and, and actually join us again in the classroom? Because it is that classroom experience that's going to be the most effective.
And, and like, like the, like the superintendent said, we're trying to do that. It's difficult with the restrictions that we still have on us with maintaining a six-foot distance inside the classroom. That's why if, if your, if your child has chosen or you've chosen for that child to be virtual and now you want to bring them into the classroom, if the principal in the particular school can make accommodations and there's room for them to fit into a classroom, allowing for the six-foot distance, Mayor, we're certainly willing and able and will try to do that for them. And, and I can't, you know, we, we talk about looking outside the box. One thing we've done with, with all five commissioners is we've looked outside of the box. Every one of them, every one of you have helped us in a certain way with a little bit of sharing your services, which, which helps us financially when I can help, we can help each other with snow removal or whatever it might come up. It's been, it's been a terrific help for us trying to, using your shared services with us.
Are there any further questions for either Dr. Glazer or Mr. Kaczynski?
This is Commissioner Petrak, I just have one comment. I, I'm sorry, I joined a little late, but I do have a thirteen-year-old son that transferred over to the middle school with all the virtual. And I think what Dr. Joe said about the virtual, using it as a tool in the future might be something, you know. I'm sure if we put a referendum up, a million people are going to say, you know, did you check into the virtual? So that's, you know, obvious to me. But I have to just say this out loud. What a spectacular job you all did, you know, from the Board of Ed, the president, you Julie, because I lived through it with my son and it was absolutely flawless for us. And I, I don't even know how you guys could pull it off. And I just wanted to make a comment about Dave, the new BA. He has come to the deli and introduced himself to me. I have to tell you, Dave, what a true gentleman, really part of the community. And I think you struggled with him and I just wanted to say that as well. So, you know, however public safety could help, I know that scheduling with the crossing guards has been, you know, off and on, off and on, off and on, it's been a work in progress, you know. And I just wanted, you know, also thank the mayor, you know, because going back and forth, you know, more, you've been great with supplying the police department with the information that we need, you know, and all that stuff. So again, I don't know how you guys pulled all this virtual off. Fantastic job. I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
We appreciate that. We appreciate that, Commissioner. But like I said at the beginning of the meeting, with, with, I think Carol said there were thirty-two or thirty-four people. Every one of us has some relation to someone who's been through this pandemic in our school system. Every one of us has a niece, a nephew, a son like Mr. Petrak, grandchildren like myself that is, is giving, called you or like my daughter has yelled at me, Daddy, why can't we do this? Or Daddy, how come we can't do this? We've all heard it. That's what's unique about Nutley and, and it's just so good to have the group of dedicated people we have here and we're all working hard. It's, it's, it's certainly is a nutty, it's a, it's a nutty group that's come together.
And I'll say, Commissioner Petrak, just, just to, to share those kudos, Sam Correll, Adam Jernik, Chief Stromalo, I, I couldn't do anything without any of them. They make sure that the crossing guards are out there and the kids love seeing them. Forget the safety, they were so happy to see them just standing out there. For me, Chief Stromalo in the snow, the rain, he's made sure that we've been able to do the community pickup, the food pickup curbside. I think you know that amongst all of the other things we're doing, we have continued to feed every Nutley resident child under the age of eighteen since last March with a contactless pickup through the middle school and now at Lincoln School. That doesn't happen without the police. That doesn't happen without, again, all of the shared services.
Nice.
And, and I'm grateful.
Well.
You're muted, Commissioner.
You, okay, am I there?
Yes.
Being in the food business and I stopped by, you know, on Chester Street over there. I don't, I don't even know how it was possible for you guys to feed all those people, you know, the kids and keep that train rolling down the track. So, you know, I, I know we have important business to do tonight and I don't want to take over here, but you know, having the son in the system, having two older kids that went through it, you know, it, it was really amazing. So I just want to say thank you to all of you.
Thank you. Are there any further questions for Dr. Glazer or Mr. Kaczynski? If not, we'll move on to the commissioners, Mayor Tucci. You're muted.
I just unmuted. I just had to get there. A little low tech, a little patient. Listen, we, we all know what we've been up against this last year. We have, we have many challenges before us. We're dealing with the development on three. We're dealing with the redevelopment of the Chickolini Building. We're, we're in discussion with development of the old pool club, all right? We have, we have many issues before us. We have a continual fight with the state of New Jersey as far as our comp trade is concerned and our transitional aid. And we, we've been relatively successful, but these challenges don't go away, all right? And while we've sharpened our pencils and we, we've reduced staff, we realized economies and efficiencies. And I can, I can speak for myself and I know the other commissioners, I'm sure will chime in. In the Parks Department, going back when I first took this job, twenty-one years ago, we had thirty-one folks in the back doing building maintenance, doing repairs on, on fields and upkeep and all that. Today we have seventeen, all right? Not because we didn't need the thirty-one at that time, but because we're working smarter. We're buying equipment that utilizes less person power, all right? And more automation to get jobs done in, in less time. I mean, this morning, and I'm sure Commissioner Evans will, will address this as well as the other two commissioners, we had our budget workshop. All right? And in the Parks Department alone, I mean, we, we continually make hard decisions. We consolidate, we, we eliminate, unfortunately, some positions because it's just, you know, you have low hanging fruit and you have a necessity to conserve dollars because we're spending taxpayer dollars, all right? And we need to be even more careful with the taxpayers' money, even though we're all taxpayers, than we do with our own money, all right? So we, we've gone, we've begun that process. We've saved approximately four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, all right, off of last year's budget. I mean, we're, we're paying attention much more than we ever have because we need to. We always should have been and we always did. But again, there are, there are different strategies and, and different implementation structures that, that we're putting in place, all right, that continually save us money while not reducing the level of services or the quality of life in town, all right? Our property values are, are increasing, which is a good thing in one respect and not so good in another respect. And I, I won't steal Commissioner Evans's thunder because he's much more eloquent than I could ever be in explaining that. I mean, public safety is always a challenge, all right? Commissioner Petrak does that balancing act. I mean, snowstorms, I don't want to be Commissioner Scarpelli, all right? Because for every, every block that you did an outstanding job on, you know, when they, when the snow gets pushed back into that driveway, you know, you get some angry folks and we get it, we understand, we live it, all right? But we're, we're, we're a, we're a big neighborhood, all right? We're a big family. We don't always agree, all right? And that's a good thing, all right? But we have a lot of expertise in town, we have a lot of commitment in town, we have a lot of good folks. And as we continue to change, we need to continue to adapt, all right, to this ever-changing environment and do the best that we can with what we have and keep Nutley as affordable as possible without lowering our standards. All right, Commissioner Evans, I'm going to flip it over to you now. It's like, I can see you're chopping at the bit there.
That's a good, great summary, Mayor. And Carol, thank you. So overall, financially, on the municipal side, we had our budget workshop meeting today. And I disclose that right now, our municipal budget is looking at a five and a half percent increase, primarily really attributed to loss of revenue. We were able to zero out the municipal increase last year by using a one-time reserve to help get through the crisis, but now we're moving into recovery. And it's, it's time that we have to, you know, pay, pay the exit fee, so to speak, and look for ways to, to deal with that. It's going to be tough. It's going to be tough for us to lower our budget. We are in negotiations with the state regarding our state aid. Those discussions are proving to be more challenging for us. And I, I sent a text this evening to, to Dave so he and I could talk more fully about it tomorrow. But my expectations around, you know, where we're going to land on state aid, it will be somewhere, some, something less than what we've gotten this past year. And the, and the way it's going to come is going to be very, very different, which I'm concerned about its impact on the schools as well as the, the county in terms of what that support's going to be from the state. It's early days. But, but, and maybe with the new federal funding that's been passed today that will get signed by the president, some of the, the conversations that I have will, will change, but they've been very difficult to, to this point. We have to think about how we look at, at more at a, at a macro level, both of the school and the municipality, what we need to do to control spending, control growth and spending. And what's the opportunity we can create to shift dollars, to start to align it, to say prioritize how we're going to start solving some of the problems that we keep talking about? Because in the, in the environment we've been in is that we, we keep kicking the can down the street and it's starting to get pretty dented and we need to address, address that. So I think one of the, I think the most significant things is, is I would ask, is, and the mayor knows this and Commissioner Scarpelli know it as well and all the commissioners. But I do believe it's, it's time for the school board and the board of commissioners to come together in some form of fashion to sort of wrestle with some of these macro level issues to see how we're going to move our way through it. So I, I appreciate, you know, the fact that we're all cooperating. I believe that we're, we're, we're moving ahead, but I, I think if we continue to move ahead in parallel, we're not going to be able to solve the problems because the, the end of the, of that discussion will always will be, how much more can the taxpayer pay? And the, the reality is, there is a price to pay. As Commissioner Ricchio told me many, many years ago, there is a price to pay associated with being in a great community. And on the balance of that, you have to understand where the affordability ceiling is before, so you don't collapse the community. So it, it's going to be difficult to stay separate and address these, address some of these macro level issues and how we get through them. And, and some of those, I think, are going to be people-related as well as, as other areas. And the, you know, business, you know, has to look at this too. My, my, my son had an extraordinary year last year of performance and should have received a wonderful adjustment in his base and a bonus. And his employer said nothing, no adjustments, no bonuses, nothing regardless of performance because of the climate. So some of these, these, these things are going to be bigger issues that we have to, to look at. We have to be smart about the redevelopment and, and how we look at what's, what's the right kind of redevelopment that we need to, to do and be guarded so that we're not accepting anything that comes across the transom for the benefit, benefit of the town. So the commissioners this morning, we discussed the need. Uh, so the Commissioners this morning, we discussed the need to uh, work towards trying to reduce our bed budget somewhat by um, by, by April uh, fourth, when we must introduce. I don't think that it's going to get less than four or four and a half percent uh, by then. And then we have more work to do before we uh, adopt. Uh, but overall, as it affects uh, both the school and the municipality, I am expecting that uh, there will be a, a lower state aid support uh, in the climate that we're in uh, right now. So uh, much to consider as we go forward. Uh, and I share that uh, from the perspective that while those are the challenges that we have to uh, face, we have to figure out how to move forward. Because the status quo is just not, uh, not, not that valuable. And I do think that uh, that a lot of research will be done to study uh, the social and emotional development of children as it relates to virtual learning and, and that environment. Uh, my own grandson had some impacts with dealing with virtual in the second grade. Uh, there's the, some of the stress of trying to keep up when you're home online, trying to come out, keep up with the teacher. That created some anxiety effects and I think that's going to be an important consideration. But looking at, and I hope the State Board of Education, you know, comes across with some wonderful thinking on how we can blend the uh, concept of uh, technology with uh, the value of, of face-to-face uh, learning. Uh, but much of that will, uh, will uh, influence uh, the way we look at going forward. But uh, my main point is that uh, we must sit down together and uh, and really evaluate how we go forward and how on a unified basis we speak to the community.
Thank you, Commissioner Reference. Um, anyone have any questions for Commissioner Evans? Yes, Commissioner Scarpelli?
I have a question for Commissioner Evans. Just had a couple of comments, that's all.
Fine.
Uh, so uh, one, I know that uh, we're required by statute for the planning board and zoning board to come together. But I don't know of another town in the state of New Jersey that gets all the boards together once a year, as we have done for the last several years. So I want to take this opportunity to thank all of you and your volunteer spirit on the planning, zoning and Board of Education uh, for all the time you put in on behalf of the people of Nutley. And uh, you know, really volunteerism is one of the things that we still have a lot of in this town. And I'd like to congratulate all of you for your volunteer spirit and your, your ability to put time and effort for the betterment of our town. So that's uh, I don't want to reiterate anything that Commissioner Evans or Mayor Tucci said. But uh, I just wanted to add that while I had the opportunity.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, Commissioner um, Petrako, do you have anything else to add?
I am fine. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Kelly, is there anything you would like to um, bring forward?
We'll follow in Commissioner Petrako's footsteps and uh, say thank you to everyone, but I'm not going to make any comments.
Okay, thank you. Um, are there any other questions for anyone? I see we have um, several attendees, uh, but I don't see any hands raised. So I assume there are no questions. Um, if not, I really want to thank everyone so much for participating. I agree, agree with Commissioner Scarpelli. I think it's extremely unique to do um, meetings like this. And um, I really appreciate everyone's participation. Yes.
Can we, can we hear from Dave Barry?
Sure.
We also have an attendee with their hand raised.
I'm sorry?
There's an attendee with his.
Oh yes, I see a hand raised now. Um, Dave, why don't you go first and then I'll, I'll, I'll call on the um.
I'll be quick. I won't bore everybody with my zoning world. Been a tough year last year. Um, Mayor Tucci, um, you asked about fences. I just wanted to answer your question a little bit more clear. Fences are always an issue. Uh, they're hard to deal with. Um, the majority of the fences that the board hears are, are front yard fences and corner, corner property fences. Um, and also side yard fences. The, the major fence that you see is in a rear yard. You really don't have too many variances with that. But mostly front yard fences and corner properties. So I don't know if the board has any ideas. Maybe it's something that we could talk about in the workshop. I don't think there will be too many, but we could look into that. Okay?
Thank you, Dave.
We did speak a little bit about zoning in the beginning and I would love the opportunity to um, to go over. Um, there's a few more issues about the zoning book that definitely looks like it could use some um, some upkeep on some maintenance. A, a workshop would be a great idea. Um, the zoning code is a big chapter. There's a lot of stuff. I do think probably I should come up with some key air, areas and get some information out to the board. And then maybe upon a workshop meeting, we could narrow it down to a couple of areas. Um, one of the things that we need to talk about is the definitions. There are several definitions that could use some better explanation. Sometimes zoning definitions are not clearly, you know, they, they, they clearly talk about a definition in one area. But then when you get a code section, it doesn't commonly go together. And I think the board could help me with that. Um, probably be a very good idea to look into the uses, the permitted uses in the town um, in the zoning districts. There's a couple zoning districts where, like for instance, on a B four um, kind of stale, there's some, if you ever read the, the permitted uses in a B four, you'd see some uses and you'd say, wow, they're, they're not even there anymore. So um, during one of these workshops, maybe we can narrow in and talk about permitted uses. Um, there's several other aspects of the zoning I can get into with the planning board um, when we do that. Um, two other areas that um, are, can, you know, we had to deal with last year. Um, outdoor seating, um, helping businesses um, get outside, get, you know, open up their businesses outside. And all the departments, the engineering department, the police department, the health department, we all work together. And, and we tell you, every, every department did a phenomenal job getting the outdoor seating licenses to our department. The, and all the departments reviewed them really fast and we were able to get a lot of licenses issued really quick. Um, but I do believe that a lot of businesses, once COVID's over, are going to be wanting to do this more often. I'm already taking calls this year from business owners who want to do some kind of out of the norm type things you would normally see rather than just the standard outdoor seating. A couple of people I've talked to want to build some roofs, some enclosures. Um, one, one, one person talked to me about an actual parklet um, in, in the roadway and, and, and
Yeah.
and, and like with a roof over it and an enclosure. And um, these are real life things that happening all over our state. I mean, this is something that we did in Jersey City. But I do believe in talking to the business owners that this is something that they're going to want to do in the future. And I think it's important if we get some guidance, because now we don't have any guidance. When, when I had to deal with the licenses this year, I had to talk to my Commissioner, you know, because we have this requirement for parking. So if a business owner wanted to take his parking lot, like you'd see over by Park Diner, and utilize his whole space for, for tables and chairs, the Commissioners were nice enough to, you know, waive the requirements for the parking. That allowed us to give him the extra table. So it's these kind of little things that maybe we should think about in the future um, that we can do. Um, one more quick thing. Last year I spoke about um, vaping. Um, this year we need to talk about marijuana um, and the aspects. And I do know that the township is already starting to talk a little bit about it. Um, I just want to, you know, everybody involved to know that um, it's something that I think maybe is more than um, just one workshop meeting. Um, I'm already getting questions. I've got at least three questions sent to me and um, about, you know, about this topic. So if we can get that put on, you know, like we said about the zoning, it's a very big chapter. There's a lot of aspects. I think we need to get a priority of what workshops we should do first and what we're going to do in an order. And I think I would probably put that on the top.
Um, Dave, if you could put together a list and really prioritize the list for us. You know, I think that I speak for the board, you know, when I say that, you know, I, it is important to schedule a workshop, you know, as, as soon as we can.
Absolutely. We were going to do.
Thank you.
Yeah.
If I might, just, I just have a few more comments and I'm, and Dave uh, just spurred some things uh, in my mind. Um, we, we are in fact looking at the, the whole uh, legislation surrounding cannabis and what our options are and what we can and cannot do. Our town attorney, Alan Genatempo, is doing that probably as we speak. Uh, but I, I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge uh, the fact that both Commissioner Evans and Commissioner Kelly uh, some months ago uh, spearheaded the effort for our business development community and made it possible. All right, uh, for a lot of these businesses to survive to whatever extent they, they could. All right, by the actions that they took and in communicating with them. I know Commissioner Scarpelli and Commissioner Petrako are on our schools development committee. So I'm sure uh, now that COVID is not over, but somewhat under control with vaccinations moving forward every day, that those discussions headed by those Commissioners will move forward. And, and I look forward to, to participating in, in that and listening to, to what some of the suggestions are. And I would be remiss and I need to follow up on what Commissioner Kelly said, Commissioner Scarpelli, Petrako and Evans. Thank you to all of our board members. All right, these are, these are pretty much thankless jobs. All right, that sometimes don't make you a lot of friends, but you do what's right and you make the hard decisions. All right, for the people of this town and for this town to stay the great place that it is and are professionals. I mean, can we really have any better people than, than Barry and Diana and all the support staff that we have that give us daily guidance, all right, whenever it, it's needed? So you, Frank, I mean, heading these, these, these boards, I mean, it's no easy job. I mean, from the outside, everything looks easy, all right? But when you get into it and, and you get your teeth into what the issues are, you know, it's, it's difficult. And Dave, Dave, I wouldn't want your job for all a tea in China. All right, and, and I know you, you're doing an outstanding job doing, you bend over backwards uh, to, to do what's right for the town and do what's right for our citizens. And I just want to give everyone a great big thank you. You can't imagine uh, how grateful, and I know I speak for all the Commissioners, we are that we have all of you. So please, we need everybody to stay in. We need everybody to stay committed. And together, as was been said all night long, we're going to keep moving this town forward and make it even better than it is right now. Thank you and that's it. I'm done.
Thank you. Um, there is somebody from the public who does have his hand raised. And I will click on his allow to talk button now. Um, if you could please identify yourself for the record, name and address.
Sure. Hi, good evening. My name is Greg DeLucia. I'm at thirty-seven Evergreen Avenue.
Thank you. And your question?
Yes, so uh, being at thirty-seven Evergreen Avenue, absolutely anticipating and looking forward to the presentation in a couple of weeks on the Diamond Spring property. Um, so my quick question to you is, uh, as far as that report that's going to be presented, when will that be available to the public um, to obtain before that here, that presentation?
I can address that. Yeah, I can address that. Then Mr. DeLucia, that should be posted in the, in the next couple of days.
Okay. Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes. Is there anyone else who has anything to say? I don't see any other hands raised.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner.
Maybe Mr. Kazir could just explain what that report is going to say and what it's not going to say.
Okay.
Or is the uh, area in need of redevelopment versus, you know, anything that's, you know, considered going there?
So ju- just, just an overall, e- essentially uh, the board has been directed by the Commissioners to conduct a preliminary study of uh, the, what I'll call just for general the, the description purposes, the Diamond Springs property. Uh, and uh, what, what it, uh, what's to be done there is to see whether it is in fact an area in need of redevelopment as uh, required by the statute. Uh, at that hearing, we'll, we'll have a presentation of the evidence that's been developed by the uh, the planner hired by the board, Mr. Reiner from DMR. He did a similar presentation with respect to the Chicagini property. Uh, he'll identify the properties he looked at. He'll identify uh, what he found. He'll, he will show you uh, pictures and have uh, maps uh, to show the exact area. And he will give you what uh, he discovered. It'll be up to the board to decide whether we agree with whatever it is that uh, he, he sees uh, and presents to the board and to, to listen to members of the public as to what uh, is presented and whether they believe this is uh, an area in need of redevelopment. Should the board find that to be the case, it then goes to the Commissioners uh, to review uh, whatever the board found and to consider whether to uh, what steps to take thereafter. The one thing that I want people to understand and because it's a little uh, typically of concern, I know it was with respect to the Chicagini property. This, this, this is not a hearing on an application that has already been presented to the planning board. There is no development that's been considered or approved for the property at this point. There is no developer or developers that are going to be appearing or presenting anything uh, at the hearing. It is simply to, to continue to study the property for redevelopment. And uh, it's an essential step under our land use laws that the planning board uh, review the request of the Commissioners and, and have a preliminary study done before uh, it can be recommended that, that, that that go forward. So that's uh, that's what's going to happen on the twenty-fourth. I hope I covered everything, Commissioner Scarpelli and uh, everybody else.
Thank you, Barry. Um, is there anyone else who has anything to add? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move who adjourn?
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there, um, eh, yeah, all in favor, please say aye.
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 I'm assuming there are no opposed. Thank you very much, everybody. I really.
Thank you, everybody. Great job. Thank you. See you all next year. See you next year.
Thanks so much. Bye.
Good night, everybody.
Right.
Good night.